Good evening and thanks for joining us.
All the same.
It's six o'clock, time for our regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the invocation in the pledge.
May I pray? Father, we are grateful for the opportunity tonight to take care of business for our community. Lord, we thank you for the awesome privilege that we have to serve as, serve the public as county commissioners. And, Lord, we know that we can't do this on our own, so we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your guidance. And we ask that everything that we do and say be, bring honor and glory to you. And, Lord, represent the views of our community the best of our ability. Or forgive us where we have failed you. Would you ask your blessings upon those who serve our community in law enforcement, those who serve in fire and rescue, those who serve in the military around the world and here at home? We pray that you would provide them a hedge of protection, that they may do their job in a way that saves lives. And, Lord, we just know that all things that you allow us to do and you direct us to do will bring honor and glory to you. So we pray all of these things in Jesus' name, according to his will and for his sake.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from March 20th, 2018, regular scheduled board meeting. Do I have any changes, corrections, or additions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Moved on to consent agenda. Got two through six. Item number five has been pulled for discussion. Anything else wishing to be pulled for discussion? Hear none, do I have a motion approved, two through four and six?
Motion approved, two through four and six.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right, number five, approval of technology proposals including boarded county commissioners, domain carve-out, and stadium wireless network. Turn our attention to Commissioner Richardson. He asked to pull it for discussion.
Just have, Mr. Chairman, I just have one basic question that has nothing to do with the wireless, stadium wireless network. It's more the carve-out. I want to know if it's going to, if this is, if there's going to be an intention to spend any money outside of the budget that's within this budget? Out of contingency or reserves?
Mr. Harris, as far as it goes this year, I'm not aware of any. Are you aware of anything that's going to be?
I don't have any knowledge of any need to spend money. The only thing that has been purchased has just.
It was a budgeted item, was this new server, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we purchased a new server which needed to be purchased anyway.
Right.
And because of that and setting everything up new, we're going to go ahead, take advantage of this opportunity while we're here at this stage to set the new one up to accommodate the change in the domain.
I mean, you have.
All the other safety, let me just say, all the other safety measures, security measures will continue to be in place. I think the outline pretty well addresses all of that. And the idea that we're going to create a new committee that'll be made up of members of the clerk's staff and county administration and possibly others outside consulting. So we'll be working together on ensuring the integrity of the security measures that, not only those that have been in place, but any new ones that need to be implemented as well.
And that, security is one of the issues with that, but also it'll look at the compatibility of whatever new programs that anybody's wanting to add to the system to make sure that it's done right on the front end, rather than getting something purchased and having to write a program to make it work once we get it.
Sure.
Wouldn't that be correct, Mr. Young, or Ms. Davin?
I do have.
Wrong, Young, sorry.
I do have one more question now that I thought of it. Who will provide the oversight for employees and their use of the equipment? Would that still be through the clerk's office and the IT department?
It'll, I'll be responsible for the county commission employees, but I always have been anyway. The security measures, though, won't be altered from what they are today. I mean, those are all preset through the clerk's office. And even the most recent implementation came through the consultant that works under the clerk. So those are not going to change.
So if we have any unauthorized use of equipment, then that will filter back through you? But will it be, will it be found out by them, or will it be overseen by?
It wouldn't make any difference who discovers it. If we discover it and it's an unauthorized use, we're going to take care of it.
No, you're fine. One of the, I had a meeting with myself, Barry Baker, and Vance Baker, and one of the things that we discussed was how that was going to work as far as the security side of it. And we wanted it set up, and he assured me that they could set it up this way, that once, whatever falls under the administration, this, the administration is responsible for, and it doesn't fall back on the clerk, and whatever the clerk's responsible for doesn't fall back on us. Accountability for whoever's overseeing it. But overall, it's still going to fall under Vance Baker's oversight for us and for the clerk.
Correct.
Well, the people that, the security for the clerk's office.
The security's going to still.
Right.
Fall.
Through IT.
Through IT, under 100%, under Vance Baker's supervision.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As I understand, this is just the general outline. We still have a formal agreement that is to be adopted following these outlines, you know, to go with this. Because it is also with the school board as well, so there's got to be a formal agreement for.
That's the agreement, are you talking about on the camera part of it?
Well, you know, just the part, I thought he was talking about the wireless on the, on this building.
No, it was, actually, that was the one part that I didn't have a problem with, because we already discussed that, so.
There will be a number of other agreements that should be contemplated with this approval that still need to come back. For instance, we don't, county commission departments don't have a direct relationship with Mr. Baker.
Right.
The clerk does. So those types of things will still need to come back later, but this is just a general overview that allows us to accomplish some things that need to be accomplished now, like this server and the wireless and some other things, and we can bring these other formal agreements back at a later date.
It's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The thing also is where our office is still going to maintain, it'll be the networks and the firewalls, and also our office, it'll be a flow-through, and we will be still handling all the backup for all the board as well.
So you're still the access.
Our office is not going to be able to see your stuff, because it will be encrypted, and it's the board's, not going to be able to see our stuff either, or the sheriff's or, so everything will be encrypted where our office is not going to be able to.
You still serve as the access point for all internet?
Correct.
Sure. All right, any further questions?
Ms. Betty.
Oh, Ms. Betty.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I just wanted, as a point of clarification, and it's probably because I've been away so long, but you know that the library has a technical services department, and we do internet and wireless and all that. This does not, this doesn't have anything to do with that, right?
I don't believe it does, no, ma'am. Shouldn't affect you at all?
If I understand also, it'll be, it's not going to affect, it'll be the library system, or it won't affect the, it's the, it's the offices and the extension offices as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I need a motion. I was thinking I had one, it was consent. Go ahead. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Getting ahead of myself. Who made the motion, sorry? Got a motion, Commissioner Richardson, second by, who was it?
My head.
Now that I have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Moving on to item seven, proclamations and presentations, adoption of a resolution declaring April 9, 2018, as National Lineman Appreciation Day. We got Mr. John Little, Director of Community Relations from Swanee Valley Electric, presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammel. We're very honored to be here tonight as you consider this resolution for Lineman Appreciation Day. Before I read it, can I introduce our four linemen that are here?
Certainly.
Thank you. Mr. Billy Starling is here. Wait for the crowd. Mr. Hunter Ash, Mr. Matt Dickerson, these are all linemen, and we have the fourth lineman here, and he's also the supervisor of our service department, and that's Mr. Craig Reagan back there. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, I'll go ahead and read this, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Whereas electric linemen approach their job with a sense of service and responsibility to their community, and whereas often they are the first on the scene when severe storms or natural disasters strike, making sure roads are safe and the lights are on for other rescue personnel, and whereas these men spend every day working on top of power poles with thousands of volts of electricity, and whereas many linemen are asked to work in hazardous conditions away from their families so they can build and maintain the systems that bring electric power to people across the country, whereas their job takes courage and is essential to keeping our nation safe and working, and whereas is the importance and the difficulty of their job recognized very seldom, and whereas the National Rural Electric Cooperative Association has established that the second Monday of April each year serve as National Lineman Appreciation Day, and whereas it would be an appropriate time for Swanee County to recognize the diligence of line workers in our country, now therefore be it resolved by the Swanee Board of County Commissioners, that we are grateful to and acknowledge the efforts made by linemen throughout the country to keep the power on and protect the safety of the public, we encourage all Swanee County residents to observe Monday, April 9, as National Lineman Appreciation Day.
Thanks, sir. All right. Do I have any comments or questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are these the linemen that put the extra small gloves and the hard nuts and bolts together at the longboard restaurant?
No, I did that.
Oh, did you? Okay.
But I did make sure you had a large pair the second round. Did you notice that? Okay.
Well, you know, I think we would have came in first if it hadn't been for you.
I think that was what held us up.
I do.
That was it.
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the work they do and what we did in the last hurricane. You know, we couldn't do things as a county without these linemen here. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I echo that. The last hurricane was, oh, and the ice storm. I think last year was a good year for y'all, and we appreciate it. You know, you read that it's sometimes the job's overlooked, but when the lights go off more than 10 minutes, you're on the phone going, what's going on? So greatly appreciated, and we thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just like to say that I've been here, I've lived here back in the day when a spring wind would shut your power down on a regular basis. And I know that you guys have been working over the years to widen those right-of-ways and take a lot of trees out, and we really appreciate all that you do. Now that we can, even though we still have a line running through the woods, it's one that's got a much bigger path to run through, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion or comments? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right, we're going to take a quick break and take a picture, if that's all right. Moving right along to time-specific items, that's 6:05 PM or soon thereafter. As a matter can be heard, a presentation of insurance audit. Lee Harvard, Beadavon Helviston, and Son.
Thank you, Chairman, and fellow commissioners. Thank you again for having me. Tonight I again bring you some good news from FMIT, Florida Legal Cities, about your commercial insurance policy of your property, general liability, automobile, inland marine, and workers' compensation. Last time I was here, in December the 5th, I presented you with a return premium check on your property for $38,355. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about your audit that you have every year. As you're probably aware, after the expiration date on every policy period, the league comes in and audits your payroll for your general liability and your workers' compensation. I'm here to inform you that as a result of the audit for this last year, that the actual payrolls were less than originally estimated when the policy was issued. Therefore, I'm happy to present you with a small, and I do say small, return premium of $9,865. For your information, what actually happens is, maybe each year I get a renewal, I and Randy's office gets a renewal form to fill out, and you estimate your payroll. You estimate that payroll, and then at the end of the year, they audit it to see what your actual payroll is. One of the things that I try to do is, I have been in the past, gotten with Carissa, this year, hopefully I will probably get with Paula, and what I try to do is get with her and try to ask enough questions to understand where your payroll may be, if you have any new positions that you've added, if you have any increases in salaries and so forth. And I always try to get with the county and estimate your payroll so that you do have, that your estimated payroll is slightly above your actual payroll. Because one thing with all of my policy with, that involve payrolls, I do not like my insurers to give additional premiums. And fortunately, about every year, that's the way it's been, and that's the way I like to have it. One other thing, I passed out some information to y'all, and I thought tonight would just be a good chance, just very quickly, and I'm only going to mention a couple, that I passed out some information that I thought would be good for y'all to know, since I don't get a chance to work with you every day, some things about the league that's unique, that they offer and do that no other companies do. And one point I will make about my services to you. Two things that I want to mention, and only two. And that's number three, as an example, that I've mentioned in the past, for the last 10 years, with FMIT being a nonprofit trust, the league has returned through their, your property premiums, a total of $592,283 in return premiums based on your property premiums. And that is something that no other company would do, because they are a nonprofit trust and the others aren't. The only other thing I did want to mention real quickly is that item 10, as your local agent, so you'll know, that this is a people business, and I have a very, very good personal relationship with the underwriter that I deal with, with all the people at the league, with one particular guy that is very involved, obviously, in your pricing. And as an example, before this year's renewal, which I do every renewal, I talk to him about what the premiums, renewal premiums are looking like. This year, I wrote him a detailed email outlining the reasons why I felt like the county should get some additional credits on their premiums. And one of the things that I mentioned is the good management that this, the county has, Randy's office, the good job he does, the good job that the county commissioners do, loss control, your maintenance program, all those kind of things. And all these things make a difference as far as, again, it comes down to loss control, and y'all have done a great job on that. So as a result, I sent him an email, he immediately responded back to me saying that my points were well-taken, and that he totally agreed with the points that I made. And as a result, the county, and you can see it on your policy, county received an additional credit of $182,876 on your policy this year, and it's outlined on your policy. But that just gives you an example of my relationship with the league and what I try to do for y'all in your premiums every year. I have a good rapport with him. I think I have, I really enjoy working with Randy and all his staff, particularly his assistant, and I just want to say that it's a pleasure working with them, it's a pleasure handling the county's business, insurance business, and I look forward to working with y'all for many years to come. And I just thank you for everything you do. Randy and his staff do a very great job. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, I don't think any commissioners had an item for today. James, do you have anything? Moving on to staff reports, item number nine, Catherine Allen, Extension Office Director.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Hopefully, you got a chance to go out to the fair. We had, I think a good time was had by all, and considering that we had a lot of new staff on board this year for their first fair, it ran really smoothly, so we're really excited about that. You missed the ag tour. That was with our state legislators that came down. We had good attendance on that, and one of the things that happened was, they got an opportunity to tour, now all of a sudden, Generation Farms, which is owned by Bill Gates. That doesn't happen very often, so I do encourage you, if you ever have the opportunity, when we have one of those tours, to take advantage of it, because you never know who you're going to get a chance to see, and it gives you a good chance to talk to state legislators as well when we do those ag tours. The other thing is, as I talk about some of these, these programs that we have and the classes that we have coming up, there are handouts out on the table, so if anyone from the public wants more information or has any questions, you're more than welcome to pick those things up as well. I've mentioned to you about the fact that we have gotten the Rural Health Grant, and this is an unusual partnership in that it's looking at health but from, including a spiritual component. So there are two churches, we'll do the first round now, and then a second one in the fall, and all denominations are welcome, but it's really looking at health from a holistic standpoint. So when we've done some of the weight management research projects in the past, one of the things that we talk about in that is that that support system is really critically important, so that once we're no longer meeting, you need to have people that encourage you and to help to support that change in your lifestyle. And so with this faith-based support, we're hoping that people will continue to be successful because their environment will be supportive of those changes. And so looking at churches to come onboard, to learn some of the practices and principles, and how they can help their, their membership become more healthy. So that is ongoing, people can join at any time, so if you want more information, let me know. Also, you know, when we have the master gardener volunteers, not only do they do classes out at the libraries, but they also run a seed library, and I don't know if we've talked about that a whole bunch, but you can actually check out seeds to grow at the libraries. And so this is a really unique kind of program that's out there, but people can come in and then share what they have as well. So if somebody that you know is interested in getting started in maybe putting some, a few vegetables in their backyard, this is a great way to start, and they can get some expertise at the libraries from our master gardener volunteers. Today and tomorrow, Swanee County is hosting the state agricultural agents, and so we've been, they've been meeting out at Camp Weed, as well as they're going to be doing some touring of Swanee County tomorrow, so just wanted to let you know in case. Tomorrow, they're going to be also visiting Heritage Park and Gardens and Rooney's Back Porch Blueberry Farm, so taking a look at some of that kind of thing. This weekend, on the 7th, the Master Gardener Plant Sale, so if you are interested in low-cost plants and getting some advice about your landscape or garden, come on down to the Live Oak Garden Club, we'll be doing that. And that helps to fund some of their projects as they go, tools and those kinds of things. As you know, we have an advanced class of master gardeners, and so one of the things that we started doing was a propagation. So we have a greenhouse, and they learn, sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's not, but that's all part of the learning process, and they can do it in a safe environment. And it also helps them, when people come to the library to get guidance, they can talk from experience, not just from book learning, so that's a great thing. They'll be doing a workshop on summer greens at the Live Oak Library. We'll also be out at the Alligator Festival out in Lake City. We have a booth there that we help out with. Bonnie, our program assistant for the family nutrition program, has started a lunch and learn series at the library, where she does a food demo and talks about the nutrition of those things. It's a free, it's during lunchtime, so people can bring their, their bagged lunch and come out and check it out, and so that's going on. We also will be having a deer plot field day. As I've mentioned before, Swanee County is home to the greatest number of deer farms in the state of Florida, and obviously, we have a lot of interest from hunters in terms of that. So we planted out at the Research and Education Center some deer plots, so that you can take a look and see what kind of things they are enjoying, if you are a hunter and want to know that. We also will be working with the county forester on the Arbor Day Program. Oh, I did want to let you know that we got two Ag in the Classroom Grants, so we are going to be starting an embryology program in the schools, which I'm really excited about that. I think one of the things that has happened to me in my tenure here in Swanee County is people are interested in living things, and it doesn't matter if you're a kid or an adult. When we had tadpoles in the front lobby area that were growing into frogs, people were fascinated with that. When we had the chrysalises growing into butterflies, people were fascinated with that. And we've also had eggs in an incubator, and people, it's amazing the kinds of questions that people ask about that. So it's a great way to have kids learn a little bit more about where their food comes from, but it also helps them to understand a little bit more that, of extension as a resource for them. You know, they may not really understand it, but they have a touch now. So we're looking forward to starting that. The other grant was for our farm-to-field, or farm-to-fork series that we always do in the summer, so this year, it's going to be our kebab camp, as in shish, kebab, okay? And we're going to be taking a look at that. Also, I want you to mark your calendar for May 11th, that's our next lunch and learn series. That's for leaders, so leadership in the community will learn a little bit more about ag, helping you to understand what goes on, and that'll be at the Research Center, that's put on by our ag, our row crop agent, Dee Broughton. We are going to be having a pesticide training coming up. We are also starting the Tropicana Speech Contest, that reaches all 4th and 5th graders in the public schools, as well as homeschool and private schools, so that'll be coming up. So if you know of youngsters, please encourage them to take part of that speech contest, have them be, talk about something in which they're interested, because it makes for a more interesting, interesting speech, if they're jazzed about whatever the topic is, and they have success. And that's one of the critical parts of that, is when they have success in public speaking, it makes them willing to do it again and again, and they just get better and better and better. So please encourage the youth, if you know of somebody that is going to be doing that. Just lots of stuff going on. I'll give you the, a copy of the Center Pivot, which is our free newsletter that all of you can sign up for online, as well as we have copies out on the desk out there. So lot, just lots of stuff going on. Those are just some highlights, there's more, but I, Greg said I had to be really short, so, he said we are on daylight savings time.
I think so, you didn't listen.
On May 11th, that one.
Pretty short for Catherine.
I think that's at lunchtime, but I'll double-check on that, yeah. I'll double-check.
All right. That's what I put down.
Any other questions?
No, I just will say that y'all staff and the Fair Board and the Livestock Board, they did a great job, everyone did this year.
Yeah, it's some, I don't know, there was just a good mix of things, we didn't.
This year was a really good year.
Everybody worked together well, they communicated well, so I'm real pleased with that.
Despite some of the ugly booths you had to walk through at the very beginning.
What'd you do, Mike?
No, I didn't mention any names.
And again, thank you guys for your support, we really appreciate it, and the staff appreciates it.
Thank y'all for what y'all did.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to general business. Item number 10, final prior approval of lot 13 and 14, Lake Louise Estates, Phase 1 replat, Ron Meeks Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Chairman, board members.
Estates, Phase One. A lot of people are familiar with its location, is right on Lake Louise. Ran into an issue, and it's come up before in the past, a couple times, where people have built their homes in the middle of two lots. The utility easements that exist in the subdivision has caused some problems with some title policies. So this was brought up during the preparation of a closing. So the replat that we're dealing with is just specifically for lots 13 and 14. The current property owner did construct their home in the middle of the two lots, and there is a utility easement that goes down that boundary that would technically go through the middle of the house. So it wasn't an issue until the title policy had brought it up. The property is currently will maintain an existing utility easement on the south side of Lot 13. And then Lot 14, well, it wouldn't be an issue there because Lot 15 is the northernmost lot, and there's an additional easement along its front and side as well. So it's really just the paperwork issue. The plat really just deletes the utility easement that goes down the middle of 13 and 14. So we have, we basically go through the process of a minor subdivision in that the board gives preliminary and final plat approval all in one meeting. So we have three original Mylars if the board chooses to approve this application and replat.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Ms. Fleming.
Even though you said that it was just a matter of the paperwork, that mean that are the utilities already down or?
Yes, sir. There's utilities there. The house is currently serviced by their, you know, electricity and everything, but, you know, because the utility easements were found on the original plat, that's the official record. The only way we can change the official record is to modify that with a replat.
Okay. All right. You did, you said you had three copies?
There's three original Mylars. You'll sign each one.
Okay.
The clerk's office gets two, the property appraiser's office gets one.
Okay.
Nothing here, Mr. Chairman, nothing's going to affect any of the other landowners, maybe 12 or 15?
There's an existing drainage and utility easement on Lot 12. There's a pipe in the grate that goes there, and it drains through Lot 12 that's there. None of that's affected by this plat.
Any further questions? Hear none. I have a motion to approve the replat.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Thanks, sir. Moving on to number 11, discuss, discuss, discuss. Discuss with any possible board action, any associated water and wastewater plant issues at I-75136. Well, I got tongue-tied on that one. You got anything, Ms. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only thing we really need to discuss about that is actually included as an additional item that has to do with the advertised RFQs, Request Qualifications. If you want to just wait until we get there, I'll address that.
Well, that's next, so if you want to go ahead and hit it.
Okay. We had advertised for qualifications for engineering services associated with utilities. Today, we were supposed to open those, and we had two packets. So my recommendation, you've got a couple recommendations in your packet. My first recommendation will be that the board authorizes to re-advertise and extend a deadline on out for at least a couple of weeks. Give some companies, some additional companies, an opportunity to respond. I'm not sure if the holiday and the deadline of Thursday messed up some of these companies that are accustomed to responding on Fridays with a deadline. So I think we're better served if we create a new deadline, move it out a couple of weeks. Second part of that would be that you authorize us to offer to those two companies that did respond, an opportunity to have us mail those packets back to them. They're unopened, or at least ask if they want us to retain those unopened there with the clerk of the court until the new deadline, at which time they would be included with any others unopened. The RFQ process is not one where we receive a dollar amount or a proposal. It's simply a history of the company with references that demonstrates their experience and their ability to provide the services we need. It requires that we utilize objective scoring criteria. In these cases, I establish a committee that evaluates all of the applicants. We score those. We take the highest score in accordance with the statute. We come back to the board with a recommendation. If the board agrees with the companies that we scored the highest, then we begin negotiating with those companies. And I say companies plural because in our advertisement, we went ahead and informed them that we may be selecting more than one engineering firm because we have more than one project going at the same time, one for the sewer plant, one for the water plant. So you've got, our requested action would be that you authorize us to go ahead and establish a new deadline and advertise that, and then offer to return those packets to the companies or keep them if they choose to leave them with the clerk of the court until the new deadline.
Any questions for Mr. Harris? All right, hear no questions. To have a motion to authorize a new deadline and authorize them to return unopened packets or give companies options to allow the clerk's office to retain the unopened packets until the new deadline.
Motion approved. Second.
And a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion?
Question in the audience.
I just have one question. Will the request, will there be any changes to the request or are you saying the same as last?
I don't plan to change any of the specifications in them, which would simply be a change of the deadline date.
All right, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. No more discussion any? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to additional agenda items. We've got one, approval of change order with McGinnis Instruction LLC, or Services LLC for associated work with the Douglas Center. Budget impact requires transfer from Board of County Commissioners, Ms. Harris.
This is a $8,622.31 proposed change order incorporates a couple of required changes by the city, which is permitting agency in this case. They had a couple of things that they wanted, specific things they want are done with this addition that we're building over there. I think the costs are reasonable. They appear to be reasonable, so I would ask for the board to go ahead and approve this change order.
Hear none. I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. At this time, we'll go into public comments and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, they can make their way to the podium, give their name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll go to administrator comments. You have anything for us, Mr. Harris?
Number two. I'm glad to be back. Said I'm glad to be back.
Amen.
Board members' requests and comments. Mr. Richardson, have anything?
Just simply a statement I found out today, unfortunately, it's today, a few days late, that a valued member of our community down in Branford passed away. Bob Fletcher was, anybody who dealt with Daniel's Funeral Home in Branford, just a man of faith and a community man, community-conscious man. And personally, we'll miss him. I wish I had the opportunity to say goodbye to him, but I wasn't aware of his passing until today. But he's a good man, and I just want to offer my condolences to the Fletcher family and all those who are affected personally by his loss.
Thank you. Ms. Fleming?
I would just like to say that with the work that's going on around the county, I would say to Board of County Commissioners, to our commissioners and fellow commissioners, thank you and appreciate things that have been done as a work in progress. As I go about the county and I see things, good things that's happening, it makes me feel proud about this board. So I would ask that we would continue, especially the lighting project out on 129 and the work that's been done with the Douglas Center. They are rapidly moving, and they're doing a good job. So I just say thank.
Well, thank you, sir. Is that it? Michelle?
Just want to touch back on the fair. I think it was a great time. A lot of good people showed up. I want to thank the community for coming out and supporting it. And like you said, I did have a booth there. And again, I want to thank the community and all the department heads for giving me information about our county to display and to share with everyone. I think everyone enjoyed it, but most of all, I just enjoyed seeing the community come out and being great and tall with those guys.
Ms. Sessions?
I enjoyed the fair a lot, too, like I always do every year, but also kind of want to echo what Commissioner Fleming said, that pretty much any board member up here I've seen is willing to step in for another, to go to meetings and do things like that. Commissioner Hale stepped in for me to go meet with the FHP here the other day when I was unable to make a meeting about some safety concerns, and I just want to say I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Only thing I.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I forgot something. I apologize. If I could share something with you. I should have put it under informational items, and you do have an informational item there. I had promised that we would put the rules and regs changes in there when we massage that language a little bit, so it's in there for those that had an interest. But number two, the pro-share agreement that we have with Florida Blue, our health insurance, we received a check, I believe it was $130,000. That's all based on claims, history. It's evaluated on a two-year basis. We had entered into that agreement with them. It's actually a profit-sharing agreement is what it amounts to. That worked extremely well for us. So I'm going to assume that depending on where we end up with health insurance next year, we'll sign into another pro-share agreement. And we've been doing extremely well over the years with those agreements, getting refunds on them. Second thing I forgot to share, we got a notice the other day from DOT. And you know, I just can't say enough good things about the people that work with us out of that Lake City office. They go to great lengths, and I know that you're aware of it as well, to help us. They know that we don't have the money we need to do so many of the projects that we're all aware of around the county. They've gone to great lengths to help us when they can. We just received a notice the other day that one of the longer road projects that we had programmed for chip seal has now been approved for a paving project. So we'll bring that chip seal project back for reconsideration and might want to shift those dollars to something else in the county, another location where, I don't know if we have any other locations in the county that need chip seal.
I've got a couple.
I got about a half on her.
We can think of one or two.
Got a few.
That project was actually about a mile and a third, and that's just really good news to us.
I want to ask a question.
What do you do tomorrow?
That, 122nd, I think, is what it is. That won't be a chip seal road?
Oh, Padlock Road is scheduled for asphalt. That won't be chip sealed. That's quite a raceway, and we want to make sure it's got high-bank curves and that it's a good asphalt project.
It is.
Some hands on the side?
Yeah. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. The only thing that I had for tonight was just, I already mentioned it once, the fair and the livestock show and everybody that stepped up to make that a success. Jimmy Norris here, they just came to the conclusion on Leadership Swanee Program that they did. That was a real good program. And any of y'all that, in the future, when they hold it again, I encourage y'all to take Wasn't the best attendee, but I was there. But it was a good class, and it was a good program. I learned a lot from it. And the only other thing I had tonight was attended the John's Lawn and Cremant, lawnmower race for ARC. And they did a good job and had a great turnout, and I was really proud to be a part of that and to see the community stand up and support the art. So other than that, I don't have anything.
Chairman, one quick thing I forgot, sorry. Catfish Festival is the 14th. Swanee River Catfish Festival is the 14th. It'll happen before our next board meeting, so that's why I wanted to get it out and invite you all to come on out, Branford, be a part of that. It's a nice festival. We have really, really good food and really good singing performances out there. So ought to be out, the Branford Greenway Park, or Branford Greenway, whatever.
I'm glad I'm not the only one having a problem talking tonight.
Whatever Mr. Scott back there wants to call it, but the Head Park and the, whatever. You know where it's at. It's behind, behind the new town hall, where the town hall's going. Don't shake your head at me.
The only other thing I would like, the only other thing I'd like to add tonight is a note at the bottom of the agenda, that there's a joint workshop being held with the city this coming Thursday at 6:00. It's April 5th. The Coliseum. Bring a friend. Other than, bring four friends.
Bring a goat.
Other than that, I just don't want to have anything. Just need a motion to adjourn.
Say good.
Make motion. Second.
All right, y'all have a good evening. Thank y'all for coming out.